I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, February 8th, 2021, and the time is 7:00 PM. We are present this evening in our new school board meeting room located at Northfield Public Schools District Offices, formerly Longfellow School. In accordance with Governor Wal's Stay Safe Plan, this room has been set up in accordance with the plan's social distancing guidelines. In addition, all those present at the meeting will be wearing face coverings for the duration of the meeting. Also attending tonight's board meeting via teleconference are Anita Ozzy, Administrative Assistant to Dr. Hillman, Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, Jim Colseth, Director of Buildings and Grounds, and Val Murstorf, Director of Finance. This meeting is open to the public via livestream. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, in the table file this evening, we had minutes from the last special close session and the regular session of the school board meeting from January 25th. We also had some personnel items, appointments, increases, decreases, change in assignment, a leave of abs, some leaves of absences, some resignations, and we also had backup information for the Legislative Action Committee, and then we also have an enrollment report.
Excellent, thank you. We will add these items to the agenda as we move forward if there are no objections. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented, moved by Jeff? Is there a second by Amy? All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, agenda is approved, motion carries. Public comment, we now have an opportunity for residents, business and property owners, parents, students, and employees of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. To accommodate the public comment portion of our meeting, we made available on the district's website the ability for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5:00 PM today. All submissions that follow the district policy regarding public comment will be read now by myself, board chair. We have 10 public comment submissions this evening. Hello, all. I do support the idea of re-centering this school, meaning Sibley, by giving it a name that reflects its geography and neighborhood. Thanks for wading into this fraught but important issue. Whichever name you choose, Maple Hills/Spring Creek, could you please consider honoring the Wapakute translation in some way as well? This is the simple way of expanding our understanding of the values and history of indigenous peoples. I trust that these names may nudge our young people's awareness in ways we cannot see to do things we cannot imagine in a future time and place. Stay Warm, Sarah Dennett. Our next public comment is from Dawn Tumerdall. School Board, I applaud you for choosing a new name for Sibley Elementary. I ask that whichever name you choose, they are all good alternatives. I think that you have it translated in Wapakute to honor the indigenous people whose land we all live on. Thank you for your consideration. Our next public comment is from Julia Ulberg Swanson. Hello, I think both names would be wonderful, referencing the Sibley's names, the renaming of Sibley. I strongly ask you to also have the name translated into Wapakute. The name would both include English and indigenous history. With peace and gratitude, Julia Ulberg Swanson. This next one's from Dorothea Haswick. School Board, I hope the school board in its renaming process of Sibley School will include a translation into the Wapakute language in accordance with a land acknowledgement passed last year by the City of Northfield and Carlton and St. Old Colleges. It would be good if the school board honored the people whose land we are living on and whose land Maple Hill and Spring Creek belong to. Dorothea notes that she is a resident of rural Northfield, parent of three Northfield graduates, former teacher at Northfield Public Schools, and founder of Prairie Creek Community School. Our next public comment is from Jane Reinhardt. School Board, here is another suggestion for a new name for Sibley School, Wapakute. This is to recognize the Wapakute as living on this land before Europeans arrived. Thank you for adding this to the names to be considered. Our next comment is from Catherine Sandberg. School Board, I urge the Northfield Public School Board to adopt the name of Spring Creek School for the former Sibley School. Please also consider translating the new name into Wapakute as part of the land acknowledgement efforts of the city. Thank you for your efforts to make changes to the school name out of respect for the indigenous people who lived here. Our next is from Margaret Youngquist. Members of the school board, I have followed the renaming of some of the district's school buildings with interest, as has been well expressed by many community members during the process, and acknowledged by the board and district, words and names matter very much. As we come to terms communally and individually with our nation and our state's terrible legacy of genocide and structural racism, we are coming face to face with many painful aspects of our history and how these injustices continue in present day. Along with renaming Sibley Elementary, regardless the new name that is chosen from those being considered, it will be important to have the Wapakute language translation side by side with the new English name as part of the ongoing land efforts of the city. I hope you will choose to include this as part of the historic action. You will be taking tonight and selecting a beautiful name for the school, one the community can be proud of and embrace. Thank you. This next comment is from Gina Waschburn. School Board members, thank you for your thoughtful consideration to rename our public schools. It would be even more meaningful if the board could, in renaming, recognizing that these buildings were built on what was Wapakute land and honor this heritage by translating the school's new name into the Wapakute language. In addition, to further honor this heritage, the City of Northfield's land acknowledgement statement should reside on each school's website. Corinne Smith submitted the next comment. School Board, I am delighted that you are taking this step. This is a powerful and important one for many reasons. The moving away from the use of the name Sibley begins a process of acknowledging the wrongs that have been done to the indigenous peoples of this land by we Euro-colonists. Might it suggest an additional step that the school board could take to enhance further the effort you're already making? I would encourage you to consider adding the Wapakute translation of the new name as part of the school's name. Thank you for your consideration. Our last comment then is from Rob Hardy. Dear Members of the school board, I'm writing today in support of Spring Creek Elementary as a new name for Sibley Elementary. As a geographical feature, Spring Creek rises to the southwest of the elementary school and flows in a wide arc around the east side of Northfield. Instead of designating only a single neighborhood, the creek encompasses mostly, most of Sibley's enrollment area, which overlaps significantly with the Creek, Spring Creek watershed. We can't know of the Spring Creek's significance to the Wapakute people who inhabited this land before its settlement by people of European descent, but we can be sure the creek's history runs deep. It flows from the vicinity of some of Northfield's newest neighbors, neighborhoods, and past the bluffs and the arboretum where Northfield's earliest homesteaders state their claims, encompassing the area historically as well as geographically. It connects three recreational areas, Spring Creek Park, Northfield Golf Course, and the Arboretum, that provide facilities for young sports and high school athletic teams. It provides important natural habitats that can connect our students to the natural world. Spring Creek is a connecting and unifying feature. It can be seen as a symbolism of inclusion as well as a symbol of growth, growing from small beginnings towards its confluence with the larger Cannon River, and from there to Mississippi and eventually the sea. Inclusion, connection, growth, and a sense of youth and hopefulness associated with spring. This is what the name Spring Creek Elementary evokes for me. I hope you will find these compelling reasons to choose the name Spring Creek Elementary. I look forward to hearing your decision at the second school board meeting in February. Okay, so those were our public comment submissions for the evening. We can move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
And we have no announcements nor recognitions this evening.
Okay. Do the board members have anything they would like to add? Not seeing anyone with anything. We can move on then to items for discussion and report, and this evening is the proposed sale of district property. Dr. Hillman and Director Murstorf will be presenting this. Thank you.
So Val, I'll walk through the agreement to begin with, and then have you make any comments. Sound good? Okay. So as board members are aware, we own a very small piece of land across the street from the Greenville Park campus, and I will just, up on the screen here right now, I will bring it up to the bigger screen so that you can see what I'm talking about here. So this is an old satellite photo from Google Images, but this is the Northfield Community Education Center, and this property here is where the new Greenville Park Elementary is located. We own a very small sliver of land right here across the street, which in a moment I'm going to ask Mr. Stratmon to help us remember how we got that small piece of land. I think that's something you can tell us, right Noel?
Yes.
Why don't you tell us how the district got that land?
The, back some, what, 1962, the city hired a organization out of the cities to come in and do a hot name development proposal at the city of Northfield, and on there they identified all the various publics and private organizations that probably should be considered. And at the time, Greenville, where Greenville Campus is now, was farmland and cornfields and beanfields and so on, and eventually the city owned it. And in about, oh, '62, the city and the school district made a deal that the city would sell that to the school district. And when Lincoln Parkway came through, it doesn't go through exactly east and west. There's a little bit of a diagonal as it goes to the north of the Baptist Church and makes the curve. And as a result, there's a little wedge of out, outline property that's been there for a long, long time, and I've been reticent to even consider selling it because it kept a north stout street from going from Greenville to Lincoln Parkway. And the school then could control the destiny of that particular piece of property using that little wedge. You've probably heard more than you needed to know.
Nope, that's, I think it's important for us to frame the history of it because I do think when people hear that we own this very small piece of property, they wonder how did the district get it, so I think the history is important. So as you know, we originally were approached approximately 18 months ago by a developer for a piece of property that our small piece of property is adjacent to. And there were some discussions at that time, but they really didn't go very far. And then just this past couple of months ago, probably mid-November or so, we were approached again about considering the sale of this property. So after doing, we've had two close sessions on this to discuss the strategy for the potential sale of the land that we're allowed to do under state law, and now we're bringing it here for discussion at the board table. But we are not taking any action tonight, want to be very clear. We're not asking anyone to vote on anything tonight, but what's in the packet is the option agreement that has been presented to us from Rebound Enterprises. I'm going to ask Val Murstorf to talk briefly about the appraisal process because we did have the land appraised. When there was first some interest in the land, we had had the land appraised. I want Val just to briefly talk about that appraisal process and what the land was appraised at.
Sure. So we did have the property appraised in October of 2019. It was at the same time we had some other parcels appraised, and so we had it done at that time. It was appraised at $19,800, I believe. The offer is for $20,000, so just slightly above the market value or the appraised value at that time. And yeah, I think that's about it. Is there anything else you wanted me to catch on?
Not at this point. I just wanted to go through the appraisal process. So the developer has offered our district $20,000 for the property, just a couple of hundred more than what the appraised value is. The option agreement that has presented you has been reviewed by the school district's attorney. So a couple of things that I want to point out. One is that there is an expiration date on this, December 31st, 2021, and that does align with the, my understanding is that it aligns with the developer's option with the adjacent property. So should, should nothing happen by that point, the district would, the land would come back to the district. So we would not get the dollars until both parts are really executed, but just want to make sure that you understand that if, if this particular project does not go through, as Noel said, the district would of course always want to be able to have some control over that, anything developed on that property. So it would revert back to the district if this particular piece were not to go through. So I want to point that out. We also have shared, we've had a couple of meetings with the developer. Val joined me last week, and we've really just expressed the pieces that we think around safety, you know, specific to foot traffic, you know, at Greenville Park Elementary. And the developer's been very receptive to that, you know, has talked about making sure that, for example, you've seen on some of the, some of the potential drawings of the property, trying to push the entrance, if there is an entrance out of that apartment complex that's being, that might, may be proposed, you know, as far toward Amos Church as possible. So there's some concern about making sure that they're working with us on what kind of safety pieces would be there. I will tell you that if you were to vote to sell the property, we would take those dollars and we would turn right around and approach the city about a shared burden of pedestrian-activated beacon. Board members know that we have had several, well, two of these for sure, where we've worked with the city, both in front of Northfield Middle School, and then again, most recently in front of Northfield High School, where we did a cost-sharing arrangement with the city for a pedestrian-activated beacon to make sure that there's a physical visual sign for motorists when someone is using that pedestrian-activated crosswalk, regardless of whether it's during school hours or not. So I, you know, I absolutely understand that, you know, we always have concern about traffic and about safety in front of all of our school buildings. I do think that the district has demonstrated over the last several years that we've taken care of some longstanding safety issues. If you think about how long we worked to get that pedestrian-activated crossing at the middle school, having to work with multiple jurisdictions because of course Highway 246 being a state road, and then also be able to get the, the one right in front of the high school across from the cemetery there. We know that that's a big one because kids park in the church across the street, and this gives them a safer way to be able to cross with pedestrian-activated beacon. So the option agreement is what the option agreement is. It's a legal document that would outline the sale of the property, which we have used the legal description, but in layman's terms, it's that small sliver of property across Lincoln Parkway from Greenville Park Elementary. So again, we have a, we have an offer on the table from a developer who, Rebound Enterprises, who are interested in purchasing it. I do want to point out that I, we've had several conversations with just folks in the neighborhood as they express their opinion about how things are progressing with this. And then I also want to share that if, if I may, that right now, you know, that, the property, let's be honest, it has no value to the district in terms of, we can't do anything with it. We can't put a playground on it. We can't put, really, we can't really do anything with it. We can put some yard signs in it, I suppose, but it's not very wide at all, and we have an operational expense. Jim Colseth, our Buildings and Grounds Director, could talk about how we have to maintain that property each year, and that we have to expend resources, both physical and human, to be able to take care of that. So this is something where we aren't able to do anything for students' education with it, we're not able, but we are expending resources on it. So it's my job to tell you that, right? It's my job to tell you that this is a piece of property that has, I shouldn't say that it doesn't have value, it's got a lot of value, but there are limited ways that we can actually use it, and that you have an offer on the table, and we're expending dollars to be able to maintain it over time. So we haven't done a land sale here in, I don't know how long, so this is for you to discuss tonight and think through how you'd like to handle this offer, and then at the next meeting, I'd ask you to vote on it one way or the other.
May I?
Yes, Val, go ahead.
Um, I, maybe I missed it, but I wanted to make sure it was clear that not only is there an expiration date, but it's also contingent on the city's approval?
I did not mention that, so thank you.
Okay.
Val, would you, just for clarification, the city's approval of the development, not of our, yeah, okay, so the overall development?
Yeah, of the development plan, yeah.
Okay, great. So we have question, opportunity for questions and comments.
So I really liked how you talked about the safety aspect of it, and since this option agreement is our chance to have some leverage in the process, I think we have to put something in the option agreement, a general statement about safety, because Lincoln Parkway is a very fast road, and a lot of cars drive along it, especially at key times, which also might be the time that the students and their families might be crossing the road. So I would love to see under Section 5 miscellaneous provision, something about safety and the developer agrees to consider, you know, the safety of pedestrians and cars while developing this property. And I think that's something we've also seen a lot of letters that have come to us have been concerned about safety, so I think it's really important to put it in this document.
Yeah, we can certainly look into that.
Thank you.
No.
I live about three blocks away, and so I've got an interest in this. I was also on the planning commission, and all of this was being planned out. When I came on a planning commission, it was horse pasture and cow pastures, and the Baptist Church wasn't there, that was a cow pasture. What I want to add is that by, by selling this wedge of property allows them to put a sidewalk alongside Greenville, I'm sorry, Lincoln Parkway, across from Greenville. And without that wedge of property, they may or may not, you know, the city eventually would have them put in a sidewalk, probably at the school's expense. And this allows the developer to put in a sidewalk, allows the children then to come down a path from Greenville Avenue, probably on the west side of the Paulson Development, Paulson Woods, and, and would join up then with that wedge of property, and if the developers then put a sidewalk on there, that would allow a sidewalk to extend roughly a block, 300 feet long, and the children then would be able to exit that sidewalk at the right crossing to the school, where there would then probably be a crossing guard, I expect, and all the rest. Without the sidewalk, without the, the developers having that stretch of wedge property, there wouldn't be a sidewalk necessarily, there probably would, but it would be the responsibility of the district. And this allows then the developer to take better control of that property, but I think also allows the children in that area to be able to walk north and follow the sidewalk to the right crossing to the Greenville School.
Thanks Noel. Other questions, comments? Joe?
Yeah, I was wondering on some of the, I mean, this property shall be sold as is without contingencies, so I mean, we do want specific use on how they're going to use that, so, I mean, you know, it's not like, obviously, they want to move forward on the development in whatever form it goes, but it, obviously, to this point, it's with all of the, the feedback we're getting, it doesn't sound, you know, really like a done deal to that, and I'd like to, we have, you know, we're a stakeholder in this, I mean, we have some, you know, skin in the game, for an expression, but, you know, we're not really in control of the development. And I mean, if we're looking at it, and as a guy that's been on the school board for 11 years, you know, when I look at this, I just hope that the, the city and all of the stakeholders can get together and, and make sure that this development is, you know, there's always, it's always controversial when you're changing things, but, you know, we want safe routes to school, and we want safe, you know, Greenville, around the corner, you know, speed limit and a safe way to get across the school, so. And I think we can be, you know, with all the, with this going on, I mean, most of the conversation should be, you know, with the city, obviously, the city controls that, so it's, it's make sure that we're stating what our purpose is and what our intent is, you know, with this agreement, but also that we're not, you know, in control of the situation. I mean, we're just a stakeholders. I think we want to be, you know, we want to be good neighbors with the developers, and we want to be good neighbors with the neighbors, Noel. And, and I think that how we can facilitate that, you know, how everybody can communicate better, I mean, I even think of some of these public meetings, I mean, I think that people need to get together and between the city and all of this stuff, and with the COVID things going on, I mean, even to say, you know, if you need it to, I don't know, I'm sure it'd be the city related, but I think there just needs to be a lot more discussion on this, and it just seems that there's so many open things that just haven't, people just really aren't that comfortable with what's going on in the whole process, but I think that, you know, we're just, we just have a part in this, and I think it makes sense to sell the property to the developer and make sure that, you know, there's nice sidewalks and that, you know, those things do. And I guess, when I look at this, I mean, I have a strong real estate background, but, you know, I just, if you sold it to them and you put in here, property should be sold without contingencies and no warranties, I mean, you know, then if you sold it to them and you didn't have some conditional use on there, I mean, if things fall apart, they can just turn around and sell it to anybody else, so. We don't want that. I mean, we want to make sure, if it's sold to anybody, that, you know, we're controlling, shouldn't say controlling, I mean, we're partnering with the developers. And I think that's just, these are some fair people we're working with, and, you know, people, all the people in that area, I mean, you've been around there for a long, long time, so you kind of know the climate, Noel, so I just, I mean, you'd have as good of ideas on that, how to just, how do you get everybody together and, you know, negotiate that, make sure this isn't just kind of a, a whole half-baked thing if you don't have all the agreements in place before you're, you know, moving forward, so. I just, and a lot of that obviously has to do with just, you know, having the city, you know, work that process through, and we just want to be good partners and good neighbors and, you know, making sure what we're doing is just responsible for our part in what we're doing, so.
So Jeff, just a couple of things, while at the beginning it talks about the no contingencies on the property, I do want to go back to the fact of what Val said, that, that agreement later on does say it's contingent upon the city's approval. So in terms of, let's say that it did fall apart, that the land does revert back to the district then. So that would put us in a case for another, so I just want to point out that there is that safety piece, that if this particular development does not go through, that the land would come back to the district. So just want to make sure that we are clear about that.
Great, thank you, Joe. Other questions, comments? Cory?
Let me start by saying I appreciate the district's position on this, that this is a piece of property that has a cost associated with it with very low return. That said, I have a number of concerns with this project, including the scope of the project, the purported affordability of the units, as well as, well, a couple other things, but those are issues for the city and the planning commission and the neighbors and the developers to figure out. My chief concern, as has been stated by others, is safety. At this point, though, the project is all conjecture. There's nothing that is for certain, nothing's been submitted to the city. If we sell this piece of property, we're guaranteeing that traffic will pour out on Lincoln Parkway. The ultimatum right now is if we don't, they're likely to go through Juniper to come out by Amos, which we all know would be far worse. I live a stone's throw from the intersection, I see traffic every day, I see people walking, including my family, my children. We don't need more cars if we can avoid it. I think it would be prudent for us to wait to see what happens. Just last week, the developers came out with three different designs that all included some partial use or complete use of Highland Avenue, either in the current model or for future use, as well as, I think, down the Greenville, Greenville as well. So there are other options. I'm not saying they're the best options, but from the lens of the district, our best option for safety is to avoid any traffic on Lincoln. Now, if it comes two and months down the road and project moves forward, and it's between us selling land and then going out Juniper, I'll be the first to say yes, sell land. But we just don't know what's happening. Just because the developers say it's so, that they would go out Juniper, it's not so. There's nothing done yet, so. I would encourage the board to sit on this for a little bit longer. With no disrespect to developers, I'm not saying no never, I'm just saying no right
I think Cory makes an important point that, you know, there's, there is nothing, no formal proposal yet to the city, right? And so I think that that is a fair point that Cory makes, that, you know, there, we have some drawings, we do have the drawings, right? We do have the concepts, but we, as we have gone through a couple of years' worth of construction, we know that our first drawings look different than the last ones, right? So I, I do think it's important to point out that there isn't even an official submission to the city yet. And on that same point, one piece I should have mentioned- And on that same point, one piece I should have mentioned earlier is that, I look at this in two different pieces, right? I think, just like Cory just said, I think there's the part about a real estate deal, right? We have this, a small piece of property that is, that does not really have any use for the school district. And then there's the other part about the district wanting to make sure that we do encourage, you know, housing development. And so the key thing there is we know that there's very low rental rate, 0.3% in Northfield School District. We also know that there are fewer than 35 homes for sale in the district. So there's two parts, right? There's the part of us selling this particular piece of property, and then there's the part about, you know, our job to try to help make sure that we are encouraging housing development in some way, shape, or form, because we do have a crisis. We just have, there's no other way to say it, we have a housing crisis in this community. And it's a housing crisis at a variety of different levels, right? So I think that in addition to this consideration, I think that we need to continue to advocate for different types of housing within the community. We are declining enrollment right now. And so we know that if we don't see an increase in housing, that we're going to continue to see some loss in students, which we know, all know how that affects our state aid and how we're able to provide for students, you know, within the school district. So I think there's two different parts to it, and Cory brought both of them up. One is the real estate part, the other part is about that housing component, and how we can make sure that we are supporting the city, you know, in the development that they have. So the point that there's nothing that's even been submitted yet, I think is important to consider.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments? Noel?
I think it's important to point out that the developers don't need this wedge of property. This wedge of property provides, I think, a greater safety for the children that are walking north to Greenville School. They'll walk along the path, and as I said, they'll come to the sidewalk, and they can walk to the sidewalk to where the crossing is. If, if we don't provide the opportunity for the developers to buy this wedge of property, they will use different access to get to that development. And, and I don't think any of those options are as safe as the one they'll use if they had this wedge of property.
Thank you, Noel. Claudia?
Just wanted to make sure that I added my comments along with the rest of you who are thinking about safety and thinking about, while I'm thinking specifically about good stewardship, that we're being offered an opportunity here to unload a liability and an expense. And there's an interest in that small piece of land that is not of very much use to us, or has some value, obviously. So I just wanted to make sure that I, you know, was clear that I agree with the point on safety, that we should have a say in that, you know, a sidewalk to, like Noel was saying, kids are going to cross, you know, and so if we had a sidewalk, if we had a crosswalk there, that would be the safest thing we could do for them. And I know a lot of the neighbors are concerned about safety, and I know the city's going to do their part for traffic studies and, you know, environmental impact, so not worried about that. I do think that this is a great opportunity for us to sell a small piece of property.
Thank you, Cory. Other comments, questions? Tom?
I seem to recall that there was discussion about, like, an overpass, a pedestrian overpass in that stretch of land at one point, when they were, the city was talking about bike trails, bike paths, and connecting the north side of the town with the bike trails and the rest of the city. And I think there was also a discussion of an overpass, maybe over Highway 3, and I don't know what all came to that, but, you know, regardless whether they build something there or not, that's a difficult street to cross. And I lived in that neighborhood too, and I've come down that road and, you know, drive it every day, and it's 20 miles an hour and I'm going 30. Maybe I shouldn't say that, but.
Please don't.
Yeah, well, no, I mean, that's, and, and so regardless of this project, or whether we sell it or not, it's a safety concern, the city needs to look into it, and I think it's a good idea that people are talking about that, especially with the Greenville School, and Greenville has capacity of more, more students, so it could be potentially more. Would this be a time to talk about its staying?
Sure, if you're, if you're wanting to do that.
Yeah, so I need to, I guess, say something else, is maybe some of you know, my son works for Rebound Enterprises. He's a senior in the high school, and he works with Brad Jerez as an intern. He has no direct connection with this project, he won't benefit personally from the sale, nor will I. I have no connection other than through my son. And as a school board member, I'd always worked in best interest of the school district, and I want, you know, I'd like to be clear. But to lay any concerns that, you know, or controversies about my intentions, I'm abstaining on voting for this, which just means I won't vote. But just so there's no suspicion of, you know, I'm trying to push it through or anything for personal gain.
Thank you, Tom. And just to clarify, Tom is able to comment and express his opinion on, on the issue, but will, at the time when we do vote, will choose to stay?
To again, this one part, so Tom raises a good point too about the speed on Lincoln Parkway, present company excluded, of course. One of the things I think as we look at that overall plan is, you know that we've had some success, for example, by Sibley School, of using the dynamic speed indicator signs. A dynamic speed indicator is one that is, it's powered by your, you know, by the sun, and then it gives you the readout of what your car is going. So one of the things that will, as we move forward, I think regardless of this, is to talk with the city about, are we able to get some dynamic speed indicators? I would say probably right where the 20 mile an hour piece starts. And if you came in through door number two tonight, you may notice that we have a dynamic speed indicator just outside this building from when this building was an early childhood facility. So I think in the good use of stewardship, my recommendation would be, is there a way to relocate that particular dynamic speed sign? But I think all of this is coming together, and it has highlighted the need for some other traffic control kinds of pieces on Lincoln Parkway.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? No.
I want to make a comment. There has been some discussion that maybe there should be an overpass on Lincoln Parkway on Linden going north. That would give a better access to the school sidewalks and so on. Our son lives in Stillwater. The school built an overpass on a street comparable to what Linden is, or what Lincoln is. And it was, it was about $600,000 to do that. And they thought they were done until they found out that when they cleared the snow, all the snow goes onto the street. And they replaced several windshields. So it does have some side effects to it also. I think the traffic, the pedestrian traffic on Linden is probably not going to increase. And there is a crossing there and a crossing guard. If I were that crossing guard, I think I'd raise my life insurance because it's right next to a curb. But I think the best part would be to put that, what was, what did you call it, Dr. Vilman?
Dynamic speed indicator.
A dynamic speed indicator, yeah. That would be a big help, and it would slow the traffic down in a responsible way.
All right. Well, thank you to, oh, I'm sorry, did I miss a hand? Okay. No, I think we flushed out a lot of the issues. One thing that sort of seems to be as yet really, we kind of tee up how much influence we really have. And, and I think that's, that's kind of come to the crux of, of the issue in terms of what we do and how much influence we really have with, with the development and its design, et cetera. So the intent is to move forward at our next meeting to vote on this and determine how we want to proceed, so. All right, thank you for the discussion. Okay, we'll move on now to the proposed 2021-2022 operating capital and long-term facilities maintenance budget. Val Murdistork, Director of Finance, is here to do the presentation. And then to be here for questions, specific questions that board members have, is Jim Colso, Director of Buildings and Grounds, Buildings and Grounds. Welcome, Val and Jim.
Thank you. So it's a little hard to believe, I am presenting my first budget for next year already, but here we are. So I'm going to talk through the capital and LTFM budget. The capital and LTFM budget, as a reminder, is a portion of our general fund budget, but we are required to present it separately. Both of these funding streams have restricted fund balances. So the revenue that comes in is restricted and spent only on purposes that are allowable for capital and LTFM. They each have their own statutes and rules that govern them. So that is why we present it separately. We are also, as part of the LTFM, Long-Term Facility Maintenance, required to do a 10-year plan. So we, over the last couple of years, have kind of tried to figure out the best strategy to present this information to the board. The 10-year plan isn't actually due to MDE until this coming summer. The forms that they want us to fill out aren't available till summer, but we have found that this, putting it all together at the same time has made the most sense. We also do this one first because it allows Jim and his team to get quotes and secure pricing and all of those things for summer, which is obviously when we do most of our projects. And that has really been a great strategy for the district to save money and get on the calendars for the, for those projects, because we know that they fill up very quickly when you have all the schools in the area doing stuff in a three-month window. So, operating capital is a combination of three different formulas. So operating capital in and of itself is an enrollment-based formula. It is a levy and aid mix. It also includes our lease levy. And so this is a specific allocation that we can do for leasing educational space. This does also include our lease with the Cannon Valley Special I Co-op. And just a note on that, that will be increasing beginning July 1st as they move into their new space. So that'll be about an additional $10,000 per year, so remotely or current. The capital levy is the $750,000 voter-approved levy. This levy does expire in fiscal '23, and because of the way the levy works, that will be revenue for the '23-'24 school year. So that is a conversation that we'll need to have as a district about what we would like to do with that moving forward. That will require voter approval if we choose to ask for reauthorization or angry. The long-term facility maintenance, that is the new funding that started in fiscal '17. I probably can't call it new anymore, it's been several years now. But it replaced the health and safety and deferred maintenance formulas. And annually, this program gives us probably about $1 million more than what we were seeing with those other two programs combined. And has been an excellent way for us to make sure that we are maintaining our buildings properly. So I think that covers all of that. On that slide, you can go to the next one. So this is the total revenue. Operating capital is about $791,000. Our lease levy is $353,000. Capital levy is $750,000. And then the LTFM is about just shy of $1.5 million. So overall, we're talking about 3.4 million dollars for both of these funding sources together. You can go to the next one. So for capital, because they have different expenditure requirements, I have presented them separately. Capital, the leased feasibility and any investments we have, obviously, if we're going to put the lease levy revenue in there, we're matching the expenditures, so all of our leases will go through here. Our proposal is about $390,000 for next year. This also includes the lease purchase for Sibley, which has been ongoing for the last several years. I think we did that in 2009 or '10. So that has, I think, five more years on this levy. And then it also includes our Gleason shop. So we purchased that, but then we did a lease purchase finance so that we're making payments for it, so it wasn't to lump them out of the plan. So that is about $212,000. We do also hold all of our technology leases to this capital budget. That is about $563,000. It will include the new, the new laptop lease for next year. And then just a note on the 2019-20 actual expenditures, you'll see it's about $715,000. The reason that is high is because of our student iPad lease. So when we got the lease, we, we did it in, it started July 1, but we were able to get those devices in January, so we got them in the middle of the school year. And the accounting standards required us to recognize half a year of that lease because we had had the devices and were using them. So this was an extra half of, half year, basically, of that lease finishing out, even though the devices have been returned. So it's mostly just an accounting thing, but I just wanted to call it out because it lived unusual. The schools and programs piece is an allocation that we provide to each of the buildings and some of the specific programs, like activities, the music program. So they get a dollar amount per student or a flat rate that we have kind of gone through year over year, that they can choose for discretionary spending at their buildings. And then textbooks is an annual thing, that's going to be about $180,000. The science standards, I believe, are coming through on that. And then we did, if you recall, we talked about moving the network administration. So this funding source for capital is very restrictive. The only salaries that are allowable are technician salaries and specifically for technology. We've reviewed this language several times, and there are no other positions in the district that we feel would even remotely qualify. And so as a way to help save some of the general fund expenditures, we've authorized $300,000 of technology salaries to go into this budget. And then the Gleason property, I put on there as the 2019-20 actual, that was a one-time expenditure to purchase the vacant lot, the 3.49 acres that is adjacent to the shop that we purchased. This, you have to actually drive through the prop, through the vacant lot to get to the shop, and so just for access purposes, that was a good thing to do, but it also gives us additional space to expand if we ever felt we needed more storage or any other things on that property. That was a one-time cost. And then the capital committee, what happens with this budget is, we take all of those things that I just talked about off the top, I, I, I look at what the revenue will be, and then whatever's remaining within what allows us to stay within our fund balance goal, which is $200,000 for this operating fund, the administrative team comes together and we pull a list together of all the things that they are hoping to do in their building that are over and above or exceeding what we would expect them to use their discretionary funds for. And then that group prioritizes and comes to consensus on what we're going to allocate those funds for each year. And I'll talk a little bit about what that was. So this is the LTFM expenditures. The quotes on the left are actually determined by the Department of Ed. So we are required to book all of our expenditures in these categories, and they have a manual with a description of everything that you can code to these. So you can see both 1920 and the 2020-21 revised budget are pretty significant totals in comparison to what we've done before. And that's because we authorized the $1.8 million to supplement our construction projects, which was an exciting thing because the, we got to do a lot more than, than we probably could have, and we got better pricing. could have, and we got better pricing because we already had contractors on site, and so we were able to, to really get quite a bit of use out of those dollars. So that $1.8 million is split. There's about $730,000 in 1920, and then the remainder is in 2020-21 as they're finalizing those projects. So that's why those two years look a little higher than, than we would typically see. So our proposal for '21-22 is about $993,500. I will say the biggest, the biggest line item there for plumbing is about $500,000. We are intending to update several bathrooms at the high school. And one of the things about the LTFM projects and that funding stream that we, that we noted after I did this presentation for you, is there is some language in the statute that allows for some additional revenue if you have projects over $100,000 in 367 for accessibility. And then I think the S-BAS is 1358, and there might be one more. There's three specific codes where if you have a project that's more than $100,000, you can get some additional revenue. And so part of that bathroom project is going to be making sure that, if possible, they are more accessible and meet the ADA guideline. That isn't possible in all of the bathrooms just because of the spacing, but we are going to look at that with the Department of Ed and make sure that we are maximizing the funds on this. So it is possible that that $500,000 might be split between accessibility and plumbing or might be all moved to accessibility. We'll work with MBE, make sure we know that, but we'll be maximizing that revenue. You can go to the next one. So for capital, we had a pretty limited amount this year. So Wi-Fi updates at the middle school was kind of the big one this year. We have, our technology team has touched pretty much every other building and updated to make sure that it's able to support all of our devices, both student and staff. We'll be updating some computers for office staff, replacing the high jump pit, and then adding some equipment at Sibley for snow removal. Most of the high school, Bridgewater and the middle school can all share equipment due to their proximity, but Sibley's just a little bit far enough away that having their own equipment is very helpful. And then for LTFM, like I said, the high school bathrooms are going to be the big project. There's annual inspections and testing that we do every year, replacing some windows at the pool, updating the air handling unit and dehumidification at Bridgewater and the middle school. I believe the middle school is the auxiliary gym, not the main gym. Jim can correct me if I'm wrong on that. The roof over the high school media center, I'm going to have Jim talk a little bit about that. We had some more conversations about that today, actually. And then repairing the middle school tennis courts. And then you go to the next slide. So this is the summary when you pull everything together. So operating capital, we're looking at about $1.9 million of revenue and about $1.9 for expenditures. We're very close to our $200,000 goal, so we typically try to keep it revenue-neutral each year. So we'll be ending, projecting to end with about $227,000. And then the long-term facility maintenance, go ahead, one, sorry, is just shy of $1.5 million in revenue and just shy of $1 million in expenditures. So an ending fund balance of 1 point, well, shy of 1.4 million. And that, so our goal for long-term facility maintenance, as a reminder, is about to have a minimum of $600,000. And this is, again, we've gotten significantly more revenue than we had in the past, and our goal has always been to grow this fund balance because of the wide range of things that we can spend it on. Though, the middle school roof is going to be replaced likely next year, and Jim will talk a little more in detail about that, but our goal has always been to grow it to a point where we could pay outright for replacing a roof. Historically, for the last, at least 20 years, anytime we've had to replace a roof, we have had to bond for it, which requires us to pay for our bond advisor and legal fees and all of the extra things that go along with that. If you recall, we did the Bridgewater roof maybe four years ago, three years ago, and we did an LTFM bond. So we still did a bond and paid all of the costs, but they reduced our LTFM revenue by that debt payment. So it was not an impact to the taxpayers. It was still a bond, but the revenue is actually coming from LTFM and not from the taxpayers, which is a bonus, but obviously, if we can save more money by not paying for the legal fees and the bond council and all of those things, that would be ideal. And I think I would suspect we might get a higher price from lenders if they knew they were getting paid upfront from the district. I didn't remember about that. So that's why you see that fund balance growing. It is well above the $600,000, but I think the term minimum fund balance is important there. There are always going to be things that come up with maintenance. We have seven different buildings that we're maintaining, and there will always be something that happens. So I think having that extra fund balance and, you know, it allows us to add $1.8 million to our construction projects. So that flexibility, I think, is going to be important in the long run. And then the next slide is just the 10-year summary. So again, this is that requirement of the LTFM plan, that we do a 10-year plan. I would say everything past 2025, as with any model, is a guess. There's a lot that can happen in 10 years, but we have picked out the big things that we know will happen, the ongoing annual things that we have to do, so that's all included here. So for 2020 and 2021, you can see that we had a deficit, and again, that was an intentional spend down to supplement the construction projects. And for 2022 and on, our goal is to, to grow it. In this 10-year plan, we did have the middle school roof being replaced in chunks over a four-year period to spread out some of that cost. That is not likely going to be an option because it is failing in certain areas and will need to be replaced instead of repaired. And again, Jim's going to talk a little bit more in detail about that. So even these numbers will change slightly from last Thursday, when I sent the presentation, from today when we had the conversation about it. So it is always in flux. Again, anytime with a 10-year, it's a lot of estimates, obviously, but overall, our goal is to grow the fund balance in a reasonable amount where we can pay cash for those bigger things that would typically have been bonded and to make sure we have buildings in, in great condition. So, Jim, do you want to talk a little bit about the numbers that we got for the middle school and the high school media center and your plan for that?
Sure. Thanks, Val, and thanks for all your work on this. And then just to reiterate what Val said to board members, these documents are always in flux, and they are just always being changed, and we're doing work all the time and things come up. We had one of the condensing boilers at the Longfellow Building where you're at right now, that went out unexpectedly about six weeks ago. So there was $40,000 of unplanned expense there. So we work as hard as we can to try and foresee the future, and Val does a great job helping me align all of our budgets. So when we were looking at the high school media center roof, it's one of our last membrane or rubber-style roofs that we have left on that building. Every year, over the past several years, we've had a lot of failures on it in the springtime, a lot of leaks, and of course, we'd like to have that fixed. Part of my struggles with, with the high school building is, you know, do I put about a 30-year roof on that, knowing that maybe we won't be there? Looking at the cost of that compared to replacing that with a lesser-expense roof and a shorter lifespan roof. It's something that we were discussing today. And one thing that's important, although that roof is quite large compared to your home and mine, it's very small in the, in the school building world. So I received our pricing just this morning for that project, and it was well above what I had thought we were going to need for that, which really kind of set me back a little bit and made us change our plans a little bit. Talking with our roofing consultants from Garland, what we discussed was rolling that project into having the middle school roof done. And just this, well, about a month ago, we had a roofie at the middle school over the gym roof. And I'm sure many of you know that's a wooden floor roof, which doesn't work well with water. So unfortunately, we're looking at the 20-year roof, which is, which is what the middle school came with, which is unfortunately started failing when it was about 12 years old, and it's been getting worse and worse every year. Unfortunately, I don't think it's going to make it to 20 years, so we're looking at about 18 years before we do that. We can do that next year. Again, talking with our contractor, I had that kind of spread out over four years, so we didn't have a huge impact on the budget. But looking at contractor pricing and availability, these things, you know, COVID has had such an impact on construction and pricing, it's, it's so much more difficult to, to get some good pricing and good service. We just thought that it was the most prudent thing to do would be to do the middle school roof all at one time in one summer and then include the smaller high school media center roof as a small add-on project to the contractor who gets that bid for the middle school roof. We felt this would get the absolute best pricing for that. It will get it done in still a timely enough fashion, which will hopefully be next summer. In the meantime, this year, I'm expecting some leaks up the high school this spring when things thaw out again. So what we're going to do is intentionally flood that roof with water. Once everything thaws out, we will locate some leaks. We will do some extensive repairs to buy us another year without damaging the area below the media center. I'll blow that roof rather. So buying us some time there. And then that will be replaced with about a 15-year, a 10- to 15-year roof and other rubber and membrane roof, which, in speaking with Val, again, this is, this is one of the struggles I have is, and, and you will, you will all be there if you're not already, is where we at with our high school. So we're always doing the best we can. We're investing a half million dollars in some bathroom renovations this year, much needed. And we're going to get that, get that roof repaired this year and replaced next year and keep things moving at the high school in a, in a safe and a positive direction by protecting that building envelope first and foremost and making it safe for the staff and students.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. So I think that's the entire presentation, so both Jim and I are available for any questions we might have.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, comments, board members have? Come.
The 20-year roof that's failing, is that covered under warranty at all?
That was not. You know, when they, when they sell those, that's, they, I've, I've looked into that, and there isn't anything that we can do with that. It's beyond that time. It has to be specified when it is built. We did specify that on the email that, that does have an extended warranty on that roof, and as does the Bridgewater roof that we did a couple of years ago. And the upcoming replacement roof at the middle school will of course have that warranty as well.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Amy?
Thank you both for the report. Val is very clear, as always, to all of these numbers, so thank you for explaining it so well. My question is, if we're going to keep growing the fund balance, is there any optimal number? Or, because, you know, it seems like it's growing a lot. And, you know, is 8 million the number we're looking for, or is it something else?
No. So like I said, once you get past five years, it's, I would say it's pretty unlikely that we would ever grow it to 8 million dollars. You know, as Jim indicated, we had $40,000 three weeks ago that just came up out of nowhere. So there are certainly going to be things that come up like that. You know, we just, the middle school roof is $2.6 million is the estimate. As you can see, that fund balance is not going to support that even for 2023. That 2.4 is my estimate. So the, the roofs are extremely expensive. I think we're in a pretty good place after the middle school go, gets done and completed, where we would have the opportunity to build that up, but there will always be things that come up and are ongoing. I, I would say if we're at 3 or 4 million, that would be the max that I would be comfortable with. We certainly don't want to just put it in a bucket and not, not be spending it on the buildings and enhancing where the students are. That's obviously a priority for us, but we know things like roofing is millions of dollars in a, in a 110 expenditure. So we just want to make sure we're balancing those big 110 things that don't come up frequently with making sure that we have our buildings in the best shape in supporting kids as much as possible. So I wouldn't see us going past three or four, but like I said, the expenditures five years out are pretty difficult to predict at this point.
Does the state care how much we grow the fund balance? Are they watching it and asking why we're not spending it? No?
No, there is not any fund balance restrictions on this fund.
Thank you.
Good questions. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Cory?
Thanks, Val and Jim. Just kind of a, maybe a budget 101 explanation for those at home. So obviously, we're talking about FY '23 likely having some budget adjustments, given our enrollment increase and just other financial circumstances, but yet here we're talking about increase in our budget fund. Can you explain how those things aren't contradictory because there's different buckets of money?
I want to make sure I heard your question completely. My computer kind of bumped in and out there. So are you asking about the, like, the $300,000 for the salaries coming out of the general fund and how that?
No. Just in general, people are hearing us locally and throughout the state that there are likely budget adjustments coming, cuts, next year or two because of financial issues with the state and COVID and so forth. Yet we're talking about growing the fund balance over the next 10 years from, you know, 1 million to 8 million. Now, I get that's a 10-year projection, but for those who may not understand why that can grow while we're making adjustments elsewhere, can you just explain how money is used differently within the district? Different buckets, different funds?
Yes, absolutely. So both the capital and the LTFM fund are restricted funds, and so they have statutes that specifically govern them. So any revenue we get for operating capital and any expenditures related to operating capital go in a separate fund balance account. They're, they're part of the general fund, but they are restricted within that fund. And the same for the LTFM. So we, the, the statute particularly for operating capital is very restrictive. We could never code a teacher's salary, for example, to operating capital. It is not allowable in the statute. The only salaries allowable for operating capital are the tech salaries, which we're already starting to do. And that's a conversation with the lease levy and those things in the future and how we want to handle that, but they are restricted by statute, really. So we can only spend the funds on things that are written in that statute. We can't, we can fix up a classroom and replace the cabinetry and paint the walls and replace the carpet with LTFM, but we cannot the carpet with LTFM, but we cannot pay for any of the salaries for the staff in that building or in that classroom. So there are, the fund balance also grows with the LTFM specifically because we do, we do a lot of our projects in-house, and so we're also just cognizant of the amount of projects we can manage at one time and both managing the contractors that we bring in and managing our own staff doing projects. So there's a balance to that as well with the number of things that we're willing to take on in a given year to make sure that we're adequately supervising and doing them properly and not just trying to get a bunch of things done quickly, if that makes sense. But that's really the reason the restricted funds and the state statutes really drive what we can and cannot do there. Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Jim and Val and their teams for just all the hard work that they do. So I know it's kind of tough to, you know, keep all of that stuff up. And I just think that, you know, looking back with K through 12, and, you know, hopefully we get by this COVID season and we get back to some degree of what is normal, but I think there's also going to be lessons learned of how we're delivering education in K through 12, you know, through distance learning and a combination thereof. You know, with the 10-year maintenance plans and, you know, looking at the flip side of when we end up talking about the decision of possibly even high school, I mean, that's a flat out $100 million. So it'd be contrasting that against, you know, renovating the high school that we have if we want to get to that. And obviously, we're more into a cuts situation, so it's not a good time, and that will be, you know, substantial increase for the taxpayer. But, I mean, those are issues on the table, but I just think, and, you know, we do a great job, you're doing a great job with just, you know, and I know with roofs, I was going to ask with Jim, I mean, what is the percentage of money increased to put a 30-year roof on as opposed to a 20-year? I mean, how much, you know, would it be percentage-wise, you think?
It's almost double.
Okay.
We do pay a premium price for a good, for a good roof, and, you know, and just to be clear, that's a warranty of 30 years. It's not just a life expectancy, but it is warranted for that long period. And at that time, on the 30th year, we can have that company come back in. They basically, they sweep the rock, the small pea gravel off of the roof. They fix anything that is showing any signs of wear. And when they do that and put new rocks back on it, it comes with another 15-year warranty after that. And of course, that is not considered re-roofing, that is considered patching.
Right.
So that comes at a lot less of a cost. So in essence, you're really buying a 45-year roof when you make that initial investment, you know, with those repairs along the way. But I can't tell you, just off the top of my head, I can, you know, we've probably spent $30,000 patching the middle school roof in the last three to four years, and that's just, I can't, it's not what I really like to do.
Right. Yeah, I mean, just on a case of history, because I went to school at senior high for, you know, three years. I remember walking down the hall, and it was like, you had to be a, you know, a running back just to get through because there were so many leaks and there were, there were all kinds of pails set up to collect the water. So, I mean, you know, the roofing issue is just, you know, going on, and I think that, you know, you can only patch to a certain point, and then you just need to put on that 10, 20-year roof and go from there. So certainly appreciate your time and thanks for your reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Other questions, comments? No?
Thank you, Jim and Val, for your report. I'm not sure when, I'm not sure Solomon would be able to decide what the voters of this district would decide to do with the current high school. But I think whatever is going to be done, I think the current high school will be repurposed in some way, part or all of it. And I would support and encourage your judgment in the use of the roofing, in roofing repairs. I trust your judgment, and you'll take care of it for us.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Great, thank you. Other questions, comments? I just have one comment, Val, or question on the operating capital where part of the formula is age of buildings. And I know I've asked you this before, and the addition of Greenville being new wasn't a significant factor in the new calculation of our age of buildings because we have Montauk on the high school. Are we at what is kind of the cap for age of buildings, or do we still have some room there in terms of how old that calculation goes to age of buildings?
So the, they actually, both operating capital and LTFM have an age of building component. The LTFM one is actually prorated, so if you, if your average age is more than 35, then you're getting 100%. And the calculation that I did prior to us building Greenville, I believe put us at, like, 33. And so we have two years where we were just, and it's, they literally take 33 divided by 35, so we were getting 90% of the allocation, 95% of the allocation, so it was the green minimal. But we also added the shop, which was built in maybe '94? Is that right, Jim?
Yeah, '92, I think it was.
Okay. Which actually helped, helped our average age because we added an older facility to that report. And so I think we have been at 35 actually still. We just resubmitted all of the square footage and things for MBE probably a month and a half ago or two months ago. And so we're waiting for that final report and calculation to come out, but I'm not anticipating really anything. If it was, it'd be a couple percent off. So not, not significant dollars, 20 or 30,000, I think was my estimate. So, but I'm not concerned about it at this point. I think we were going to be over 35.
Great, thank you. All right, well, thank you for the report and always your demonstration of financial stewardship. We just appreciate your, both your and Jim's work. It's difficult budgets to manage because there is more need than there is dollars. So, thank you. Okay, we will move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To our next item for discussion, policy committee recommendations. There are four policies in the table.
Actually, the first part here, we've got two for the first reading.
Never mind.
And so we've got, they're quite less, they're not as meaty as the previous ones we've been working through. The first one is around license status, and it is really, there's just some changes to make sure that we're talking about the appropriate professional educator license and standing, standards board, and then just some other pieces around general statement of policy, what the district is able to do if a teacher were to allow their license to lapse. There's also, while the board doesn't approve procedure, we've included the procedures for you, just so that you can see what they are. And I want to be really clear in the licensure one, we do start notifying staff, teaching staff whose license expires at the end of June of that year. Usually, they start getting notified in January. On January 1 of the year that your license expires, you're allowed to start making the application to have it renewed. So this is really something that is the responsibility of the individual teacher, and so we just want to clarify what the potential outcome is if we do, if a person does not re-license appropriately. And then staff development, just a handful of updates, just really making sure that we clarify what we're looking for with our staff development program and also that the district is able to require people to attend that. So those are first reading policies this evening.
Great, thank you. And I apologize, the oversight, policies 426 and 427 were reviewed and found no substantive changes. So tonight, our discussion is focused on policy 424 and 425. So any questions or comments? Okay, so these, we, this is first reading, so we will formally approve these two policies at our next meeting. We'll move on now to COVID-19 response and operations update. Dr. Helman?
Yes, and I'm really happy to share with you that we have kids back on campus in every single one of our buildings as of last week. So in December, I shared with you a return to campus plan, which we then have executed. Our incident command team looked at that every Friday in January to make sure that the public health circumstance was still on track. And we have brought back our pre-K2 students, came back on January 19th. And then last week, our third through fifth grade students came back every day in first unit at the elementaries on February 1st. And our middle school, high school, and area learning center students returned in a hybrid model where they're on campus two days a week and learn at home three days a week on February 2nd. So we are all back. I'm hearing that it's like having a first week of school again. Everyone is tired, right? Because it's the first week of school and you're getting back into the routine because the distance learning routine was different than what the getting up, getting ready, getting to school, all that kind of thing that is, we all know what the first week of school is like, so many staff members have told me, it's, this year, they had two first, two first weeks of school. So then I wanted to just point out the virus trend. I've included the weekly incidence by agent collection report from Rice County. I do want to point out, I've had several members of the community ask me, you know, Matt, the county rate for 10,000 residents is still above 40, slightly above 40, 43 last week. And the learning model parameter table that Governor Walz set out on July 31st, you know, suggests that our middle school and high school students should still be in distance learning. And people who are saying, I'm happy that the kids are back, I just want to know why we're doing it this way. And as I've shared with you before, we reached out to the Minnesota Department of Health and asked for a consultation. You are allowed to have a learning model that is in a less restrictive environment than what your data would suggest, as long as you have a consultation with the Department of Health. Our consultation with the Department of Health happened in mid-January. We pointed out the success that we had managing safety protocols back in the fall when students were on campus. And then Rice County Public Health also backed us up in that, showing that the data in the county, the bulk of our cases still reside in the southern part of the county. So when we looked at those couple of pieces together, the Department of Health had no objection to bringing students back in the hybrid model. And again, what we're hearing this week is people being very diligent about following the safety protocols, and that's something that we're hearing nationally as well, that schools have done a good job of mitigating the virus transmission at school. I also want to share with you, as you look at the communication portion, we are returning to our in-person and hybrid communication protocol, which means that we update the dashboard on the district's website daily as necessary. So if there's an increase or decrease in cases, we make the update. If there's nothing to change, we don't change it. And then we've also gone back to sending families a very simple weekly report. It just simply says, here are the number of new cases that we've had in the district in the last week. Here's what the Rice County, the current Rice County case rate for 10,000 is, and we give people some helpful links. So that is what we had settled on in November, and we are bringing that particular part back. Talk a little, two other items just want to briefly touch on, one of which is just amazing. So I reported to you on, when I put this packet together on Thursday, we had had 140 of 630 staff members who had been vaccinated or were waitlisted for vaccination, either through a partnership with Northfield Hospital and Clinics to vaccinate our, people who fall into category 1, a school nurses, paraprofessionals who function as personal care assistants, special education teachers who provide direct services. And then we had roughly 43 people who had gone through the state's pilot program or were prepared to go through the state's pilot program. Some of them are still on a waitlist from that one. And then just, we got, we got a message about a week and a half ago that said, from the state, understanding that the pilot from the state is over, please have all your staff fill out this survey, and then the state will take it over from here. So we pivoted and took care of that, and again, grateful for the state helping prioritize educators. And then surprise, we went right back that week, last week, to prioritizing using our own internal list because we were really blessed, that's the only word I can use. We got a call from Rice County Public Health middle of the week saying, we have another three doses for you if you can get 33 people here on Friday done. Aaron Bailey on the call, got a wonderful surprise, a call from Rice County Public Health saying, Aaron, we have a special line of vaccines that are only able to be given to people who work in childcare centers or preschools, and we are struggling to get other venues to bring their, to be able to bring their people to us. So we had approximately 28 people who we understand were vaccinated by going to Rice County Public Health on Friday. And then late Thursday afternoon, I had a call that just, you know, really floored me. Northfield Hospital and Clinics, good partner, said, Matt, we're going to have 250 doses for you for next Wednesday, February 10th. So we worked from, we got it confirmed on Friday. Over the weekend, we worked on making sure that we got information out to the 250 staff members, you know, next on the list. Those emails went out last night. Record keeping, we're making sure that we're doing as best we can with the record keeping, but with multiple programs, and there's been some challenges and some overlap. So we had a handful of people said, great, but I don't want to get vaccinated twice. We're even able to include more people than we originally thought. And so I just cannot say enough about Steve Underdahl, Dr. Flannery, Jeri Ann, and the people at Northfield Hospital and Clinics, who we've been partnering with and working with. Dr. Flannery's been on several of our webinars with families and with staff, who are really looking to say, we want to make sure the schools, the staff at the schools in Northfield are vaccinated. So 200, I have to tell you, I get emotional just even thinking about it because it was, you know, 328 days ago, or 330 days ago now, actually, where, you know, Governor Walz told us we had to go home, you know, last spring. It's about a year ago at this time, if you really look back when the first cases started to hit the United States. And we think of within one year, we were able to create, not one, but multiple vaccines that are going to protect people in the near future. We have to be very proud to live in a community that has said, we're going to put our educators to make sure these folks are vaccinated so we can safely have kids back in school. I also understand that there is a strong possibility that we will have another significant event. Don't know the number yet, but I anticipate within the next 10 days, we will have every staff member, including our substitutes, including our bus drivers are part of this on Wednesday. And all, you know, substitutes, every employee in the district who has an interest in being vaccinated, I have a strong feeling that within the next 10 days, that will be, that will happen. So again, that's thanks to the partnership that we've had with Northfield Hospital and Clinics, Rice County Public Health, who has just been outstanding through this whole thing. So vaccination, really, if you think about the last couple of times I've shared with you, was like, well, we got 10, we got 33, but I told you that was a pilot and that people were starting to ramp up the infrastructure. So it is, what I can tell you is that the people in our school district are grateful. They are incredibly grateful. They understand that only 10% of Minnesotans so far have been vaccinated. And in our state, we're prioritizing educators so that we can safely reopen schools because we know how important it is to get our students back on campus. So that's all I'm going to say about that for now, but it is truly, there's, the only word that comes to my mind is blessed, that we've been blessed with this. I also want to share with you that we continue our anti-racism work, and you all know that we have worked with Equity Alliance of Minnesota. And so we are having Equity Alliance of Minnesota here on campus, again, well, they're not on campus, it'll be via Zoom, excuse me, on February 15th, and all district teaching staff on a professional development date, they'll have a three-hour professional development session in our next part of our anti-racism series. This session's focusing specifically on racism, and it's focusing on things like structural, institutional, and interpersonal racism. It's going to talk about how do those types of racism impact our students, and then it's going to provide specific strategies to staff of how to disrupt racism. So we think this is an important part in our, it's a multi-series piece that we're working with the Equity Alliance of Minnesota, and we are also working with Equity Alliance to provide that same training, albeit in a more digested format for the community. Remember, we held the implicit bias training for the community. We had about 60 people attend that at Northfield Middle School. We're working with Equity Alliance, how would they take this three-hour training and be able to condense it into something that we think community members might be willing to attend? We know that we have a central role in making sure that this kind of work is done within our community, so we want to make sure that we offer the training and we have it to our community as well. So final piece is that we are working with the city of Northfield, the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative, to be able to bring together a coalition of businesses, local nonprofits, the colleges, Rice County, Northfield Hospital, to look at, expand this work to where we're all doing this together in the community. It's around the collective impact model of Northfield Promise. And we know when the community of Northfield gets together and says, this is the direction we're going, and we all work together, we know that we can really move mountains. And we know that this issue of racial equity in our community is something that the school is not, cannot be responsible for. We are a part of our community. It has to be an entire community effort to make sure that we have a place that is inclusive for people to live and work and grow. So we're proud. So we're proud to be a partner in that group. And that is my report this evening.
Excellent, thank you. Questions, comments, board members now? Amy?
Dr. Hulman, I just want to thank you for all of the partnerships you've put together, and I just share your enthusiasm about the vaccinations and how that's all just sort of falling into place. And I think a lot of that is because of the relationships you've built over the years and your ability to bring people together and get them to work with the school district. So, thank you very much.
We're blessed to have a great community that wants to do good things for kids.
Well said, Amy, thank you. Questions, comments, others? Claudia?
Yes, I also wanted to say that I'm just so pleased to hear about the vaccination program and the 250-plus vaccines, so just thrilled. I had a question about the Equity Alliance. Did they set the courses? Is it a bundle, or do we have a say on what themes or topics are going to be presented?
Yeah, so Equity Alliance has a three-part series in which they work with school districts to address racial equity within their school systems. And actually, it even goes beyond racial equity. So the first part was, we did that smaller implicit bias training to begin with. And Equity Alliance helped us with the cultural competency training that is required of all teachers to renew their licenses. It's not just an hour training, it's required to be at least six-hour training. And so those parameters are set forth by the state. Equity Alliance has then taken a look as you're growing a mindset of racial equity within your school system, a way that you move through and step through concepts to make sure that they're accessible to everyone, regardless of where they're at in their journey. So, I work with Sebastian Wutherspoon, who is the executive director of Equity Alliance, and this is the pathway that he suggests as this part of it for school districts. Shakopee is another partner, they have already done this part with your glowing reviews from Shakopee Schools about this portion of it. So we have some input, and at the same time, we know that they have a very strong research base. They also have a tremendous amount of experience in recommending what the appropriate next steps are to help move systems forward.
They're excellent facilitators in the training that I went to and the little bit of exposure I had to their curriculum at the middle school when I was employed there. So, just really pleased that you're partnering with them, or we are partnering with them. Are there other, do we call them vendors? Are there other vendors that approached you, or did you approach them?
So, for about 18 months, I attended every equity presentation that I could see at both statewide and national conferences. There are several other partners that you could work with. And it was two years ago that I saw the Equity Alliance presentation at the Minnesota Association of School Administrators, and they, their approach, I felt, was really the right one to fit with Northfield. They really talked about helping people start wherever you are at in your racial equity journey, and then be able to help people move forward. So, Regina Seerock, who is the woman who was the speaker that they talked about, that, you know, we really need to call people into this work rather than calling people out. And I think that that was something that really resonated with me about wanting to move everyone forward together, because I do have a fear that when we talk about these very difficult things, people will sometimes tend to go and they'll, they will not want to talk, they will not want to be part of it because it is very difficult. And I was very impressed with the way Equity Alliance handled that. And there's a lot of small group work, a lot of, it's not just somebody talking at you, it's, in fact, we were their first Zoom-based training last spring out of necessity, and it was excellent. I mean, the use of break rooms, the use of making, of talking points and facilitated discussion questions. It was by far, and it's not even close, the best reviewed training that we've ever had from our staff. And so it was very good. So, there are a number of other partners that we actually work with in a variety of different ways, but at this point, this is the group that seems to have the best pathway for our school district.
Excellent, thank you. Other questions, comments? Cory?
Yeah, just a real quick comment about the return to campus plan. So I think everyone here knows I have two children at Greenville School, kindergarten and third grader, so we got the experience of the stay guard rollback to school, and it went really well. So I just want to commend Sam Richardson and his staff. Both my children are coming home happy. They wore, well, they're home the whole time because of the quality of teachers they have. My wife and I often will go meet our children at school at the end of the day and walk them home, and the whole process there is handled really well. So just really pleased with what we've seen and experienced, and I have no doubt the rest of the buildings are doing just as well. Thanks Cory.
No, you had a comment? Oh, sorry, I thought I said. Any other questions or comments? Okay. One thing I did want to just highlight, or ask about briefly, it's well early into the year, it's February, but I know at the legislature, Governor Walz has about $58 million that he's trying, would redirect federal funds for some summer programming, and there's House File 4 that is including some funding. And so, as board members through MSBA and C, we will probably see some communication because there's some, you know, the work to leverage the, you know, our influence to try to get the House File 4 passed as soon as it can, so that school districts and what, the dollars that we would get to do some sort of summer programming for, to address, you know, some of the learning loss. So, recognizing that districts need to have those dollars and know what to plan for and how to plan for. So, we're hopeful that there will be some dollars, but that they will come in a way in which the district will have ample opportunity, which is probably not likely to happen. But I know that Dr. Hulman and his staff have already been talking about some options for that, even maybe redirecting some of our current CARES dollars that we know we have to do that potentially. So I know we'll hear about that in the coming weeks, but just wanted to tee that up, that as board members, we'll see some communication where legislators will be asked to act early on those pieces, just because, you know what, it seems to be February, you know, school districts need the time to plan those kinds of programs, they don't just happen overnight. So we'll hope that that's the case.
Yeah, and we've already been working on contingency plans for summer. We already, you know, we have many summer programs that already exist, and those funding streams, for example, through targeted services, they still, they are still here. So what we're really trying to do is look at how can we align all of the funding that we potentially could have, and we are working to develop multiple iterations of our plan. What it, just where we're at right now, we'll be meeting later this week to be looking at some of the potential contingencies we could have. And then next week, we're meeting with targeted services to try to move that portion forward, to try to align all of these things. And we're really looking to try to push our summer program actually back further in the summer, to look at, to have it be a run-up to the start of next school year. We all know about the summer slide, right? We all know about how we can regress. We also just know at the end of this school year, we're going to have a whole bunch of people who are tired. Staff, parents, kids, they're going to be ready for a break, right? And so, looking to potentially delay our start of summer school, or summer programming, if you will, till late July, even potentially early August, using the Bridges to Kindergarten model that we've really successfully used over the years, and thinking about, how could we use that same mindset to really have this excellent level of preparation running up to the beginning of this school year? And then, there's so much focus on summer programming right now, because we all want to knock this issue that we've seen with the pandemic and the fear that we have for our kids' academics, we want to knock it out of the park on one pitch. Forgive me with the baseball metaphors, right? We want to get it all back with one swing. That is not going to happen. Anybody who understands brain research knows that we are going to be working on this for some time. So we're looking at, what's the best series of things that we can do, not just to make ourselves feel good in one summer, but how can we make sure that we have a plan to accelerate student learning that is something that goes beyond just the summer? So our NFLD Learn team, which is made up of our instructional leadership and our principals, will be getting together later this week to be formulating those plans, along with how can we align targeted services. But Julia is right. If the past is the best way to predict some of the future, the hope that we can have any answer on House File 4 before June, I think is the safe bet. But I join Chair Richard in asking our board members and the people at home to make sure that they're advocating for quick passage of whatever the dollar amount the state is going to provide in addition to create summer. You cannot get that funding in June and turn around and put a quality program together.
Excellent, thank you. We'll look forward to hearing more about that. But you're right, we have such a strong framework for summer programming and the opportunity to build on that. And it appears legislators are now understanding the importance of transportation as that piece as well, so we'll be cautiously optimistic.
Correct.
Okay, so we can move on now to what I believe, yes, is our last item for discussion, which is renaming Sibley Elementary School. Dr. Hulman?
Yes, so what this document provides you is the, an update on the process of renaming Sibley Elementary School to bring it into compliance with Policy 809. I'm not going to provide you the background, you know, you passed Policy 809 back in October, and it requires us to rename schools in the district that have, that are named after a human being within one year. And so, when it comes to the renaming of Sibley School, the public was invited to participate in a process, it was via, they could submit names via Google Form. The form was made available on December 18th, the final submission was January 15th. We had a total of 46 submissions with 36 unique names offered. You might remember that back in November or December, I shared with you the plan for doing the renaming, and that involved a committee. So we did have a committee that was made up of several folks, it was myself, Principal Scott Sanus, includes Sibley Educational Assistant Ulrika Peterson, Sibley Teacher Paula Bargary, Molly Lloyd, who's the PTO president. We also had one current student, and we also had a Northfield High School junior who's a formerly, former Sibley student be part of that committee as well. And what we did is we did, initially, we did something called power voting. So if you've ever, it's the dot thing, and if you've ever worked, we went on facilitating, I use a lot of that, let's do some power voting with dots and put as many dots as you want next to your choice. So we came up with a Google Form way of doing that, so committee members could vote for any of the 36 names as many times as they wanted. So they could vote for the same name many times, they could vote for eight different names, or any combination thereof. We then did the calculation on that, and then moved the top eight names forward, and we gave it back to the committee. For those of you who know me, know I love something called a Delphi process, and this is very similar to a Delphi process, where people have multiple opportunities to bubble to the top what are the best options. So we gave the top eight choices to that committee, and then we forced them to make some decisions, and we used a ranked choice voting option. So, they got the names, they had to put them in order, top to bottom of their favorite preference to their least favorite preference, and that generated the three names I'm bringing for your consideration. Maple Hill, Maple Hills, and Spring Creek Elementary. Now, I will tell you that the word Maple appeared in, I believe, eight or nine of the potential 36 names that came forward. And I think when we think about these three names, as was mentioned, you know, Spring Creek is a presence within this neighborhood, and it isn't just necessarily about the soccer fields or the neighborhood to the east, but it's even more than that. Maple Hills is a development neighborhood just to the, it's just down the hill from Sibley, it's right at the corner of Jefferson Parkway and Maple Street. And then Maple Hill, of course, refers to the iconic sledding hill that is adjacent to the school. So we have three excellent options for you, and what I'm asking is for you to just have a little discussion tonight, no vote, but then I'll bring, I will bring what I think, what I think is the will of the board, to the best of my ability, to you at the next meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you for the work with the committee. It sounded like a really excellent process to bring these three names forward. So, questions, discussion members want to have on the names? Amy?
Thank you for explaining the process. It sounds like it worked well. I have a couple impressions here, and then a couple of questions. First, you know, I guess all of the names have good features, and the Maple Hill seems nice because it's right on Maple Street as well. And, excuse me, there's no confusion with Spring Creek Park, because there's a park right next to the school, so I would think that might get confusing. I need a drink of water, so.
Yes.
Come back in a minute and talk.
You bet.
Okay. All right, thank you, Amy. Other questions or comments?
I was going to say, they're all terrific names. Spring Creek might be the easiest one to adapt to. People will start to say Sibley, they could quickly change to Spring Creek, but they're all, they all have a great background to choose any of them would be great. And I also really liked what the community was saying about honoring the Native American tradition in this area, so that could be something we can discuss another time.
Thanks, Claudia. Amy, you ready to?
I hope I am. So, I was going to say, I think these are good options, but I was actually very moved by the 10 letters that we received today. And as they were talking about honoring the history of the indigenous people, it also made me think about some of the concerns that other people have had when we were changing the name, that we were losing the history of Sibley and the opportunity to teach a history lesson. And so, then I had some other thoughts. So, to me, it seems like it would be great to have a historical connection to the Wapakute Indians. And then I was thinking of the policy, which I voted for back last fall, and I wasn't sure how that would apply, and we were pretty specific in the policy that had to be a local feature or whatever. So, and I was wondering if there was any Wapakute names that had been suggested and eliminated, and just your thoughts about, is that even a possibility? And if we were to do something like that, how would you see it being done? I mean, could we do something as easy as Wapakute High School, or would we translate it, or is that just not top something we can do with the policy?
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of things there. You know, first of all, we're so grateful for people who are paying attention, right, to this important procedure. I would articulate, we've laid out a process, the board adopted a policy, we took names. There were some, there were people who, there were two or three people who made a suggestion that they did not provide a translated version, but there's three where people indicated that they thought, you know, having some kind of translated name would be something that would be appropriate. Those did not come to the top, you know, through the committee. But I think that there are multiple ways to be able to address it, and something I've been remiss in not sharing with the board, is I've been working with Earl Weinman, so we all know Earl is the, one of the social studies teachers at Northfield Middle School. He is in charge of the Scope program, which the Scope students have presented to this group many times. So in, for three buildings, for sure, Mr. Weinman and two of his former students who are high school students right now are working on a historical memorial, if you will, that will go inside Sibley Elementary. It will be inside of Longville, and I should probably be right outside, or it'll probably be upstairs here at Longville. And then, also with the impending change of the Raider mascot, also something for Northfield High School. And the intent is to be like, if you've ever gone to a historical place, and they have the placards of, you know, these pieces of reading about what you learned, and I think that that would be a very appropriate location to include, you know, some of the history of the Wapakuti tribe and the area. So I think that when we look at how we rename the building, my recommendation would be that we follow the process that you set, and I think that there are other ways that we can include and honor that history, because I think that history needs to be more than just, just a single name. So my recommendation, my suggestion would be that we integrate this into these historical marker, if you will, kinds of placards that are being developed that would be placed inside of the school.
Joe?
Maple Hill, Maple Hills, just gets confusing, you know, it's the hills, 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 hills part. Spring Creek is fine, I mean, that's a decent name. I mean, we agreed in this process before that to be generic, and that we're not going to go and name it after a group of people, or we're not going to name it after an individual. And again, it's fine if people want to call a building whatever after a tribe of Indians or whatever you want to call it, but there's also a history in this town. One of the names that I would have thought, John North Elementary. I mean, there's, I've been on the board for Oklin Cemetery for years, and if you want to see some people that have put blood, sweat, and tears into this community for generations, I mean, they're buried there. I mean, I just, I think that, you know, this community, including St. Olaf College, and Carlton's been around forever, but, I mean, you have descendants from many European countries, I mean, more specifically Scandinavia, which I'm like a fifth-generation Norwegian myself. So, I honor the people that have put... So I honor the people that have put blood, sweat, and tears into founding this community, and regardless of where they're from. And I just think that if we're going to stick to something, you can call it, you know, whatever you want, but the idea behind changing this policy was to get to something generic. So I'm gonna roll with, you know, Spring Creek Elementary, and I think if people want to expand that to different ideas, but, you know, this town was founded by John North, and the historic part of it is that, you know, it's many European settlers. So, I mean, we have to honor those people too. And I think that, you know, again, you can contribute to whatever you want on that, but if you're forgetting the main thing of the main thing of the people that have been here in the last, since the American experiment's been around, you're kind of missing the point. So I just think, call it what you want, but let's just, if we're gonna go generic, let's just stick with generic, and let's go Spring Creek Elementary, and, or, you know, or vote on what you want. But that's a pretty good name, so that's my two cents.
Thanks, Jeff. Other questions, comments? Corey, and then I see Tommy, you have a comment as well.
So at first blush, I saw these names just by sound. I preferred Maple Hill. Then I started thinking more about the meaning of the names, and as Matt illustrated, you know, a hill, a neighborhood. Spring Creek is way more inclusive to everyone who attends that school. So I would be in favor of that. And then I also learned that the school intends to keep its mascot named Stars. So my children are both proud Geckos. I wouldn't say they don't care that it's called Greenbell Park, but they care that they're Geckos. So if we're gonna retain Stars for the school, Spring Creek Stars sounds pretty good to me. So I would be in favor of that.
Thanks, Corey. Tom?
So when I was thinking about it, I showed like the name of Wapakute Elementary, but that's just a sale. I was actually thinking of Maple Hill Elementary, because Spring Creek is an area and its boundaries that we arbitrarily decide as populations change. Same with Maple Hills, whereas Maple Hill is the actual location of the school. So, I mean, it's, any of these names are good, and I just wanted to point that out. It's just a little differentiation to choose that name over any of the other ones, but any of the names are good. And the tied it into the indigenous people whose land it is on, when those European settlers came here and took it from them, is important. So I think we should, in that placard or whatever, make that clear.
Thanks, Tom. Noel, did you have a comment?
I'd like to speak, but I, I like the thoughts that were conveyed. So Spring Creek, the creek is a result of several springs that are located in the southeastern part of that community. And I think it's representative of who attends the school. It is, there are probably people living in the neighborhood of those springs that attend the school. And so the name in my mind is, Spring Creek, is more inclusive of the whole, the neighborhood, not only the hills and the Maple Hills, but the whole area. And I think it's more representative in my mind of who attends the school as well, as not just the location, but from where they come from.
Okay, thank you, Noel. Okay, well, thanks for everyone's input. I have a tendency to agree with those who were highlighting Spring Creek Elementary. I appreciate the, sort of, the background that Rob Hardy provided in public comment, and I think about Bridgewater being, you know, Bridgewater Township and Greenbell, Greenbell Township. It does kind of encompass a much larger area than, than just the school. So we will move forward with the decision next?
Two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now, Monday, February 22nd. So thank you for the great discussion. So that does conclude our items for discussion. We can move on now to approval of the consent grouping. And there was, just a reminder, there were a number of personnel items in the table file, and as well as the minutes of the January 25th regular school board meeting and closed session. So is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Corey. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on now. We have three items for individual action tonight. One is, the information was in our packet regarding the action we want to take with the renaming of Longfellow School Building. I will ask for a motion and a second, and then we can have a discussion. So is there a motion to approve the Longfellow School Building? Be renamed Northfield School District Office and Area Learning Center effective immediately? Moved by Corey. Is there a second? Second by Claudia. Okay, questions or comments? Dr. Homan, you wanted to provide just a little feedback on how we got to this point.
Again, working to bring us into compliance with Policy 809. We, this process mirrored the same processes. Sibley, we launched the forms at the same time on December 18th. Last submission on this one was made on December 30th. We had a total of 11 submissions, with really only one that met the criteria. I think that there are a number of people in the community who still think this is an elementary school, because they made suggestions for, and again, it's been a lot of things over the years, as Mr. Quinell would point out. So it's been a kindergarten center, it's been an elementary school, we of course have the Area Learning Center. So there was really one name that came forward. We did hold the committee meeting. I am recommending, rather than normally, we ask you to hear a name at one meeting and then approve it at the next. But we determined that tonight because it is, the policy really dictates that buildings that are district-wide functions have a plain meaning name. And so we did meet with the committee, a similar committee. It involves some Area Learning Center folks, involves some District Office folks, a student from the Area Learning Center, and we are putting forward Northfield School District Office and Area Learning Center. Some board members have had questions, why not Northfield Public Schools District Office? Less number of words, frankly, some of it. And in addition, whenever we use Northfield Public Schools and District Office together, there's always the age-old question for the grammarians in the room of whether it should be possessive or not. So trying to make it as simple as possible, the recommendation is Northfield School District Office and Area Learning Center. We are then going to work to repopulate the web so that it's very clear when you Google this that it's where it's at. We'll also provide very specific instructions that if you're going to the Area Learning Center, the entrance is at door six. If you're coming to the Northfield School District Office, it's at door one. So we have a real strategy of how to make sure that people know, even though it's all tour one South Orchard Street, that people know exactly where they're going. So that is my recommendation this evening tonight, and I'm asking you to consider a perban.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So we have the background on why it is before us as an item for individual action. Does we have a motion and a second? Are there any questions or comments? Jeff?
Yeah, I obviously went to school here, grew up on St. Olaf Avenue. I mean, I'll always call this the Longfellow Building, so it doesn't, I mean, it's just a matter. I don't think half the people in town would know where to go. They say go to the District Office, but, and that's just kind of a tag. And I do see the theme that you wanted to work on of naming buildings about, you know, what their functions are. And I also wanted you to expand a little bit on trying to give some dignity and honor, which you were good at, and some other things that we've talked about, of a little bit of historic value or something that you'll put in the hallway eventually, explaining the history of what the building, you know, is or was.
Yeah. Yeah, so what we plan is, and again, if you've ever been to a museum or a place that's a historical marker, there's usually a sequence of, I call them placards, I'm not sure what the appropriate term is, but a series of placards that describe, you know, a certain historical feature or historical marking. And in this case, what we are working with Mr. Weinman and the Scope students on is to start back. I actually have the Bond referendum guide for this building. It was built for $249,000 in 1948, and someone sent it to me. They found it in their parents' things. It's very cool. So there's things in there that we would include in the historical piece. We would also include in the historical display, I guess is what I'll call it, where we will talk about what the different functions that this building has had over the years. My intent is to really put it right inside the main entrance at door number one, right by the service window, so that if I'm someone who's coming into the district offices, that I have a chance to see it. We could certainly replicate it down in the hallway here, so people attending board meetings could see it as well. There's no reason we couldn't have put it at both entrances. But to describe, for some time, this building was mothballed, right, Noel? There was a period of time where this building had no, no students, and it was, the term would be mothballed. So giving it the history of its pieces in elementary school for a long time, for the time that it was shuttered for a period of time, when the district was lower on enrollment, its resurgence as a place for the Area Learning Center. It was also a kindergarten center. All kindergartners in the district came here for a period of time. And then most recently, the room that we're sitting in was our Early Ventures Program, right? It was the Early Ventures Program. So to discuss, you know, what the history of the building was, what the different functions of it were over the years. And again, we think honoring that story is important.
Yes, Jeff?
You know, I was gonna say, I mean, it looks great with the new windows, and I think a couple of bullet points with this place, I mean, obviously, they're just doing some, you know, development on it, but, I mean, this place, I mean, this is really built, this is really a solid building. And, I mean, I think too, is even one of the more efficient buildings that you have in the district. So, you know, good move coming up here, changing, and it's just, it's a timeless building, so grateful for that.
Yes, I think it really speaks to the stewardship of our, of our district, that we were able to repurpose this, and it's just really an amazing, amazing space for our administrators and our teams to be, to be working. So other questions or comments on the motion? All right, so wait, oh, I'm sorry, Amy?
I just thought of it, and it's, it's not really on the motion, but as you're talking about the history of this building, I realized that the building may have future lives doing something else than what it's doing now. And what happens to the name of it at that point?
Well, that's for someone in the future to decide. I'm not going to worry about that one today. But joking aside, my sense would be that if the building were to take on some kind of different role, then we'd have to make sure that it was in alignment with Policy 809. And so the future, or the future administration would walk us through that piece.
Yes, I think the policy would dictate that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Okay, our next item for individual action, the information regarding the Legislative Action Committee was in the table file, but it was similar, the proposal that we presented at our last board meeting, and then the updated committee assignments are as part of that information that was in the table file as well. So is there a motion to approve the formation of the Legislative Action Committee at a point Corey Butler, Claudia Gonzalez George, and Chair Richard to serve on this committee in 2021, as presented at the January 25th, 2021 board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Tom. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Any questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. So we'll look now to a motion of our last item for individual action, which is the approval of the policies that we reviewed as first reading at our January 25th board meeting. So is there a motion to approve Policies 103, 417, 420, and 422, as presented at the January 25, 2021 board meeting? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Corey. Questions, comments? There were some questions on a couple of the policies, but as you can see, those adjustments were made. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. No questions or comments. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Okay, that takes care of our items for individual action. We have, as part of your table file, the enrollment report for February 2021. Dr. Homan?
Yes, so you'll see that we've, again, provided this report monthly, and you will see that our grand total for February 1st was slightly down to 4,024. And when we pull out and look just only at our full-time students, that's excluding early childhood and part-time independent study, ALC, we are at 3863. That's it.
Okay, and I appreciate that we have separated out the portage numbers. I believe at the last meeting was 106 students who returned to campus for portage. So those numbers are reflected here. Does anyone have any questions on the enrollment report? Okay, our next item for information is building open houses.
Yes, I'm thrilled to, to paint a vision of hope moving forward. So we all know that our being here in this place is one of the last parts of our construction projects that were approved, generously approved. Over 60% of the public approved those projects, $41 million worth of them in 2018. I wish Jim Colseth was still on the call, so we can give him his appropriate respect for all of the amazing work that he has done, and of course, our awesome Director of Finance, Al Mervisdorf, who really helped shepherd all of these things from beginning to end. And you think about Aaron Bailey's building was affected, Scott Sanus's building was affected, Nancy Antoine's building. Principals played a key role in this. And so we are coming to the end. We are now using all of these spaces. And normally, we would like to celebrate, right? We would have had big open houses, and we would have had the whole community come through, but alas, the pandemic has disrupted that. But that does not mean we still can't do that. So we are planning to hold open houses on Thursday, September 23rd, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at all of the areas where there were construction. So at Greenbell Park, at the Northfield Community Health Center, at Sibley Elementary, at Bridgewater, and the district offices. So when we're looking to the future, it's an opportunity to kind of have a ribbon cutting, and then also to potentially bring people through and see these wonderful new facilities. So mark your calendars for September 23rd.
Excellent. Thank you. So any questions on that item regarding building open houses? Okay, we can move on now to future meetings. Our next meeting is Monday, February 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. Just prior to that, at 6:00 p.m., we will have a special closed meeting in conference room 105 at the Northfield School District Office. Then again, in March, on Monday, March 8th, at 7:00 p.m., regular school board meeting. And then just as a note, we do only have one meeting in March due to the district's spring break. So after March 8th, we will move into April for our school board meetings. So we are just really fortunate to be in this amazing, beautiful new space we have for our board meeting, and that we are able to accommodate social distancing while we're here. So all meetings going forward will be, will be held here. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.